Ready to go?
Yep.
All right. Well, we'll give this a try. It worked well two weeks ago. A little bit different setup today, but we'll go ahead and get started. Just a reminder, talking to the mics. It sounds like on the Zoom side of things, it's hard to hear at home if you do not talk into the mics. Is that correct, Gary?
That's correct.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get started with the April 13th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on April 21st, 2020 at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. Seeing no one from the public here, I'll just make those notes again if I see some folks come in during the meeting. With that, the first item will be the roll call. I would note that myself, Travis, and Gary are here. Sonny is on via phone. Catherine is on via Zoom, as well as Jim Coleman, and Sandy is gone. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the March 27th, 2020 minutes. Does anybody have any changes, concerns, comments? And I guess just for meeting process, I'll go through folks here on the dais first, and then I'll follow up with folks connected electronically so we can maintain some order here, I think, instead of everyone hopping in. So you have anything? Travis, Gary's got nothing. How about you, Jim? Any comments to the meeting minutes? No comments to the meeting minutes, Jim? For some reason, we can't hear him. I don't know if he's in on the call or not. Kathy, how about yourself?
No, I have no comments.
And Sonny?
No comment.
With that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the March 27th, 2020 minutes. So moved?
Second.
Motion in second for approval of the March 27th minutes. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying, I guess we've got to do a roll call.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So, okay, so how are we going to do that if Jim?
Can we get a positive response out of Jim?
Shakes his head and give me a moment to get him on the screen so we're recording.
Okay. Jim, can you hear me? Okay. So in order to vote, I'm going to need some sort of positive response from you. So can you give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down when we go through the vote? And we'll do a roll call vote. Thank you.
Okay, Rich?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Jim?
Noting that Jim provided a positive response or an aye for the March 27th minutes. Item two is approval of today's agenda. We have consent items three through eight, with items number nine and 10 being conditional use permit layout plan, followed by our normal county items 11 through 15. Are there any changes to the agenda today? Seeing none from anyone here at the dais, anybody in the electrons have any changes to the agenda today? Kathy?
No.
Sonny?
No.
Jim, do you have any changes to the agenda today? That's a no. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. So moved?
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, we'll do a roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Jim? Thumbs up.
Got a thumbs up? All right. Agenda is approved. With that, that brings us to the consent agenda items.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, interim planning director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendations by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review, CU 1617, for West River Electric. Ross Johnson is the agent. It is to review an existing electrical substation in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1617 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review, CU 1807, for Tim McTavish, to review four illuminated on-premise signs within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a highway service district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1807, with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review, CU 1848, for Robert Pace, to review a pole barn as a primary structure in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1848, with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review, CU 1903, for Joseph and Terry Krieger, to review a storage shed garage as a primary structure in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1903, with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review, CU 1909, from Martina Pooh, to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1909, with conditions. And finally, item eight is conditional use permit review, CU 1914, for Dottie Pugsley, to review a multifamily residence in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit, CU 1914, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the agenda? Starting with you, Travis? Gary?
None.
Kathy?
Yes?
Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to approve, pull from the agenda?
No.
Sonny?
No.
Jim?
No.
Okay.
Hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Good.
So with that, there aren't any agenda items in the consent agenda that staff or the membership wishes to pull from the agenda. Thus, I would request a motion for approval of today's consent agenda. So moved?
Second.
Motion in second to approve consent agenda, further discussion? Seeing none here on the dais, any further discussion in electrons? Kathy?
Was the question, further discussion?
Yes.
No.
Sonny?
No.
Jim?
No.
With that, roll call vote.
Rich?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Go ahead.
This is Kathy. Jerry needs to speak up just a little bit, or be a little closer to the mic. I really, it's hard to hear when she calls the roll.
Okay. Did you hear that, Jerry?
Thank you.
No problem.
Also, I noticed that microphones haven't been muted, including Joan's. I believe the feedback is making it a bit hard to hear.
So are we talking the mics on the center stand? Is that what would be providing the feedback? I'm not sure. Anyway.
I think Joan ran back to the, I don't think Joan's in there, is she, or is she?
She's getting the next guy on the phone for item number nine.
Okay. Well, so the gentleman, Danielle and Jody Endress, they're going to be on the phone, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe Joan's getting them. Okay. I guess we're ready.
Mr. Endress, can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome. Go ahead.
All right, good morning. Christina Proetti, county planner. Item number nine is conditional use permit 20-06. On March 9th, 2020, the applicants, Danielle and Jody Endress, requested a conditional use permit to allow an accessory structure, which is a garage slash workshop with a bathroom in it, prior to a primary structure on the subject property. The subject property is currently zoned as limited agriculture district, and there's no special flood hazard on the area. The lot is able to gain access from Tinload Court, located within the Harney Mountain Wilderness Road District. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted and upon property values within the immediate vicinity. The use of this proposed accessory structure should not affect the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted. The next one, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for the uses predominant in the area. It would appear that by allowing this conditional use permit, the use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. Utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. The proposed use of the accessory structure on the property will require utilities and facilities that are not already in place, which would be an onsite wastewater treatment system. They are proposing a garage in there. And access is to be provided off of Tinload Court. Lastly, staff has no drainage concerns relating specifically to the applicant's request at this time. The next one is that off-street parking and loading requirements of these zoning ordinances are meet. Right now, you know, Pennington County's zoning ordinance, Section 310A9, does not identify a minimum number of off-street parking for an accessory structure. However, Section 310A9K requires two off-street parking spaces for a single-family residence, so as long as there's adequate parking there. And lastly, that the measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. This proposed conditional use permit by its very nature should have limited odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations, and interest of lighting. Staff has routed this through the interdepartmental review, and there are no other items of concern. Staff is recommending approval with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from anyone here on the dais?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Gary.
I have just a question for Christina, and simply because I don't know the answer to this at all. But when you receive permission to build, in this instance, a garage prior to a principal residence, do we, is there a time period in our ordinance that gives them when they have to have a principal residence then?
No. If this conditional use, conditional use permit is approved, we would review it, let's say, in the next year, and then maybe two years, three years. But there is no timeframe of when they have to have like a primary residence on there.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Further questions from the dais here? Seeing none. Kathy, do you have any questions on this item?
I don't have a question, but just for the record, I'd like to point out that on the first map, that's right after page five of five, the towns of Hill City and Keystone are, the labeling is reversed. So just as the record needs to be fixed.
Yeah, the cities. Thank you. For the towns.
Okay.
On the site map.
Sonny?
No, nothing.
Jim? Apparently, Jim, we've lost you, so I need a, do you have any questions on this item?
Is somebody talking to me?
Yes.
Uh, no.
Okay. Somehow, we got him. All right. Mr. Endress, no one from the Commission has any questions for you, sir, on this item. So we would, at this time, be ready to vote on this item. Is there anything that you would like to address?
No, no, sir.
Okay. My only question for you is if you've read the conditional use permit, and then the conditions on the conditional use permit, and if you have any questions on any of that.
I have read it, and no, I have no questions.
All right. Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion on conditional use permit 20-06. As staff. Motion for approval. And second, further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote? All right.
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Endress, for joining us today. Item number 10.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Jason Thedison, county planner. Agenda item 10 is layout plan 20-06. Applicants are Jeff and Holly Godber. They have applied for layout plan 20-06 to combine two lots into one lot in order to create Lot 1R of Mountain Park Placer subdivision. As the properties sit today, both of them are zoned general agriculture district. They both contain special flood hazard area. Both have access off of Sheridan Lake Road, although there is no permitted approach permit for that. There is no existing.
Excuse me, this is Kathy. I can't hear at all. You need to either, you know, get closer to the mic and speak a little louder, please.
Okay. Apologize for that. I'll start over with the existing conditions. Both properties are zoned general agriculture district. There is special flood hazard area on both properties. Access is taken off of Sheridan Lake Road, although there is no permitted approaches. And there is no existing onsite wastewater treatment systems for either property.
Kathy, can you hear all that?
Yes, much better.
All right. Keep going. Thanks, Jason.
Okay. Lot A, as you can see on your screen, is the one to the north. It currently consists of 1.1 acres, contains a nine-by-nine pavilion, an eight-by-12 shed, and an outdoor stone fireplace. Although none of these buildings are required to have building permits, they are all three within the special flood hazard area, and will require a floodplain development permit to be submitted. There is also, I have pictures of, oh, sorry, there's the eight-by-12 shed. There is the stone fireplace on the left with the pavilion. And there is also one other existing structure on that property, and it's a four-by-four decorative outhouse. You can see, it's just a shell of the house. There's no hole or anything like that inside. Lot B consists of 1.41 acres and is vacant of any structures. It did at one time have a single wide mobile home on it, but it was removed in 2015. Proposed Lot 1R of Mountain Park Placer will be zoned general agriculture district and consist of 2.51 acres. This does not meet the minimum lot size requirement for a general agriculture district. Therefore, a rezon and comprehensive plan amendment or lot size variance will be required for the proposed lot. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. A couple of comments came back from that, one being from County Highway, stating that there was no approach permit off of Sheridan Lake Road for either property. That will be included as a condition of approval. And secondly, the county floodplain manager stating that there is special floodplain, or special flood hazard area on those subject properties. The minor plat will need to contain the 100-year floodplain limits in accordance with current FEMA maps. And a floodplain development permit will be required for the existing shed, pavilion, and outdoor fireplace. These will also be addressed as conditions of approval. Just to kind of recap everything here, lot size does not meet minimum lot size requirements for a general agriculture district per Section 205 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Future land use is identified as planned unit development sensitive. Therefore, rezon and comprehensive plan amendment or lot size variance will be required for the proposed lot. There is special flood hazard area on the property. Therefore, a floodplain development permit will be required for the existing shed, pavilion, and outdoor fireplace. The applicants will need to apply for an approach permit from County Highway. And for the purposes of layout plan, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, and recommends approval of layout plan 20-06 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none here on the dais, is, are there any questions for staff on this item from Kathy, Jim, or Sonny?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, I just want to make sure I understand the approach issue. There must be an approach that is being used from Sheridan Lake Road, but it's not permitted at the present time, is that right?
That's correct. Yep. Here, right about where the lot line is, the existing lot line, there is access off of Sheridan Lake Road with a gate. But County Highway says that there is no permitted access off of Sheridan Lake.
Say that again, please, and speak a little louder.
Sorry about that. Right here at the existing lot line, there is actually an approach there with a gate, but according to County Highway, that's not permitted. So the applicants will have to work with through County Highway to obtain a permit.
So in other words, the situation is that they need to get a permit for the existing approach?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. It's, um... So the reason I got mixed up on this is that if you look at number two under recommendations, it says that the applicants obtain approved approach permits from the County Highway Department prior to installation of any approaches off Sheridan Lake Road. But really, in fact, they need a...
I can hear them, but I can't.
Keep going, Kathy.
Okay. I mean, I think that that isn't quite accurate, then, if indeed it's, should be that the applicant obtained the approved approach permit from the county, you know, for the approach that's already there. Right?
Well, I guess I would qualify that as, is there actually an approach there, or are they just driving off the side of the road?
They drive off the side of the road.
I see. So there really isn't an approach, there's just some sort of an access that they use improperly?
They drive off the shoulder of the road. Yep.
So is, and so that shouldn't be allowed, what they're doing now, is that right?
Correct. That's why they would need a permit from County Highway.
Right. I don't know. It just seemed to me to be a little bit fuzzy here on how that was being handled. But as long as everyone's clear on it, I guess it's fine.
Sonny, do you have any comments?
No, no comments.
Jim?
Uh, no.
The only thing I would note is, if you look at the 100-year floodplain line on the map, the actual developable area on those two lots is a fairly small portion, so... With that, staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL 20-06 with 13 conditions. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval. Move approval. Second. Motion in second on agenda item number 10. Further discussion? Seeing none here at the dais. There's no further discussion on any of the, on items, or on agenda item number 10? Kathy?
No.
Sonny?
No.
Jim?
No.
Okay. Then we will move forward with roll call vote.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sonny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Agenda item number 10 carries, approved. Brings us to item number 11, the county board report.
Good morning again. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the March 27th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Just another item of note, the Board of Commissioners did approve the comprehensive plan at their April 7th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. And just as clarification, Travis, they did approve to strike that sentence. They were in agreement that they thought that it was too restrictive to be in the comprehensive plan, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now, the, my main question then is going to be the path forward on getting the items. I know that when I talked with you and Michelle, you guys had a sequence of things that you wanted to, that have to really get through and approved first, and then I'm assuming that after that, we will have this list of items in that comp plan that the county will be trying to approach and address. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. One thing that our state's attorney did bring up is that now that the comprehensive plan is approved, there will be no more changes to it. The Board of Commissioners will have to approve a resolution for that comprehensive plan on their April 21st, 2020 meeting. So once that resolution is approved, then that timeline starts.
Sure.
The next ordinance amendments that will be coming in front of you are Section 507, which is a construction permits, Section 506, which is building permits, and Section 511, which is fees. Because our comprehensive plan does have additional zoning districts identified in it, rural residential, rural ranchette, staff is working on amendments to our zoning ordinance to address the permitted and conditional uses in those zoning districts. So that will be coming in front of you shortly also. Those need to be in place so in the future, people can rezon to those districts, and we have permitted and conditional uses identified.
For those districts.
For those districts, correct?
Perfect. Well, I look forward to it. It's been a long haul to get to that point in the document, and I've always said the real work is going to be coming up with and going through all of the documents associated with the changes that have to happen as a result. So I'm looking forward to those. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are no folks here from the public, so we will skip agenda item number 12. Item 13, items from staff.
Items from staff is the building permit report. The building permits are actually up for March 2020 from...
I can't hear Brittany.
Sorry. The building permits are actually up in this, for 2020, from March 2019. Our office is still receiving building permits. We're still getting quite a few by mail and by email. So, and we're receiving quite a bit of phone calls from the public, so our office is, I would say, still fairly busy for this time of year. So our processes are a little different at this point, but we are still working through some of the things. I think our office is still handling items in the same manner.
Thank you. Any questions on any of that? Okay. Next item is items from the membership. We'll start with the dais. Anything on the membership? Seeing none here. Kathy?
Yeah, I have a couple of things that I just want to ask about. One is that, you know, there's, and this has, both of them have to do with construction. You know, there's some serious construction going on right near Fort Hayes, which is out, right, Highway 16, Moon Meadows area. And I checked, and it's just with, just near the boundary to the Rapid City city limits, but it's in the county. And they're really making a mess. And I'm just wondering, is there a construction permit for that? And does the staff know anything about it?
Actually, yes, we do. There was a building permit for an amusement structure at Fort Hayes. They were to start construction here shortly. I can certainly have staff go out there. I'm not sure if staff has been out there to do an inspection.
Yeah. You know, I don't know, it's difficult to measure how many square feet or so they're disturbing, because it's so vertical. It's not a horizontal, you know, cut at all, but it was during the wind last week, it was just, it was really quite a mess. So I appreciate maybe if somebody could go out and just see how that's coming. So I appreciate maybe if somebody could go out and just see how that's coming. Secondly, this, uh, you know, Kroll is doing a lot of work in their quarry. And here again, last week, dust was really a problem. I mean, there's, I, I drove through it myself. Visibility was reduced on the highway. Other people asked me about it. So I don't know how that is, but, uh, does, does staff, have you heard anything about that situation?
Um, yes, we have received, um, complaints, um, from other people about the dust at Kroll. Uh, staff is in contact with, um, the operator, um, to work through some of those issues.
Yeah, I, I think they need to take this dust control kind of seriously.
Okay. Any, any other items from the membership? Sunny?
Nothing from me.
Jim?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Um, with that, we have item, uh, fifteen, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for adjournment, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, I guess we do a roll call vote to adjourn. Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kathy? Sunny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And stay healthy.